... Building Committee of May 26, 2011. And before I actually ask the roll to be called, I'm going to recognize Mr. Mayor Police. He has a statement that he wants to read.
Yeah, this is regarding Springfield Stealth Tax. Just months after state lawmakers increased income taxes by 66 percent, Wooddale residents could face devastating cuts in essential services if Springfield politicians get their way and don't return hundreds of millions of dollars already paid by local taxpayers that are legally owed to local communities. One legislative proposal is threatening to cut Wooddale's funding by $300,000 per year. This amounts to a stealth tax on local taxpayers in our communities. Illinois municipalities and counties rely on the Local Government Distributor Fund, which was instituted in 1969 in exchange for cities, villages, and counties not imposing their own income tax. It guarantees municipalities and counties a share of state income tax receipts to help fund local services. But some members of Illinois General Assembly have proposed changing state law to hijack locally generated revenue. Municipalities have already spent the last three years cutting budgets with delayed projects, deferred maintenance, canceled capital construction, furloughs, and layoffs. Our customers, our residents, want the local money for police officers and snowplows instead of letting the state use it. The City of Wooddale urges residents to contact their local legislators and voice their opposition to the Stealth Tax. You can contact your state legislators now. We have Representative Dennis Rebeletti's phone number is 217-782-4014. Senator Carol Pankow, phone number 217-782-9463. In summary, any reduction to LGDF is a direct reduction of municipal services, including public safety and public works. And these are essential services that our residents rely on every day. Any reduction in LGDF is not a reduction of the state's debt, but a shifting of that debt to another level of government, that is, the municipalities and their taxpaying residents. All this information is also on our website, wooddale.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the -- oh, I'm sorry, there is a question. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Mr. Mayor, you went down there yourself?
Actually, that was canceled because they were not in session, but possibly this weekend I might be down there.
Is there any -- have you heard any date that when they're going to possibly put this to a vote?
Well, I did hear something from our lobby yesterday. He called me and they said they had narrowed the gap between the House and the Senate, but nothing was conclusive as of yet. But the Page Mayor's and manager's has sent an email out today asking if any mayors can go down this weekend. I responded and said, yes, just let me know when and where.
So this is still in committee?
It's -- they're still.
Okay.
Still.
Okay, thank you.
Will the man take her? Please call the roll.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Coles?
Here.
Alderman Lazara?
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Shaki?
Here.
I declare a quorum. I make a motion to approve minutes stated May 12, 2011. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is report and recommendation on the Station Walk License Agreement. Mr. Kramer.
Kramer Winger, what you have before you is a staff recommendation written by Mr. Forrest. He also spoke with myself, and we have several license agreements in other surrounding homeowners' associations around the city. This is one that staff would like to possibly look to get out of. What you have before you is the particulars, the agreement or resolution drafted by the city attorney to -- for the staff recommended that, you know, we look at possibly no longer servicing the Station Walk Town Homes. It's approximately 288 feet. That's the length of the pavement surface. It's directly off a Division Street adjacent to the Metro parking lot. We did get a lump sum back in 1988, as the memo states, for approximately $4,000 for maintenance for that. We currently, Street Department does not do any of the snow removal out there. From my understanding, it sounds like back several years ago, they had asked us not to do any snow removal because our equipment was so large and they needed to place that snow in strategic locations throughout that parking area that their contractor actually, when they do the driveways for that area, they actually pack the snow in and around those driveways. If we were to go in there with larger equipment, I think it would be harder for their contractors to do that. Outside of that, the pavement condition, which is kind of what brought this up, they had made a request to our office to look at possibly resurfacing the pavement. We did go out and take a look at the pavement condition. Staff feels is in a very good condition. We wouldn't even look at doing any maintenance ourselves, even with the timeliness of this coming up during our street sufficiency study evaluation. And the report this evening, again, you know, we didn't look at it because it is a privately-owned street, or that's the way we view it. The condition is very good. There are minimal cracking. We didn't investigate, do any cores to see if the depth of the pavement was up to city standards, which possibly should have been looked at before we walked into an agreement on it. But, you know, again, we haven't done any full-depth patching out there, so we don't know the depth of the pavement, which is part of the reason why we're a little uneasy with, you know, taking on that task as well, so.
Okay, and I'd just like to clarify that I was under the impression this subdivision was off of Division. Is it the one off of Wooddale Road?
It's Louise Court off of Division Street, going into Metro on the right, right before it gets to Metro parking lot.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Alderman Lazara?
John, what have we done for the street in the past, do you know?
In recent history, our Street Department has done some patching, some minor patching out there, potholing, probably near the concrete ribbon, near the stop sign of Division. That's what I can tell. Outside of that, probably not much, just because the pavement was relatively new, 1998. There is no seal coat, there's no slurry, there's no rejuvenator that's been placed on it. Again, not a lot of work has been done out in that area. Not at least in recent terms. I can't say what's happened beyond that. Again, you know, records for Street Department go back, they're fairly informative, back to about the early 2000s, 2005. Anything earlier than that, not very well categorized into an easy data.
Follow-up question. John, you also mentioned that we do have other agreements in -- do we know how many that we have?
Back in June of 2010, our previous city engineer put together a list for our then-city manager, Douthwaite, and that list had Elizabeth Park on there. It had Tall Oaks. Those were the only two maintenance agreements that we know that we have. This one came up, like I said, about two months ago. It was signed back in 98. Not sure if it was filed and got placed somewhere. Our office didn't know about it, so we assumed it was never even on our radar screen for maintenance. So, again, any maintenance that was called in, even on areas that we don't traditionally have a maintenance agreement, perfect example would be Sunset, Homestead, those private streets off of Wooddale Road. We work with those residents. If there's a pothole, if there's something that needs to be fixed, if it's a minor maintenance item, we traditionally take care of that. And, again, we'd be more than happy to do that going into the future, if that's all right with everyone else. We would like to work with everybody. Again, it's more the, you know, adding the street to a resurfacing program for a $4,000 one-time payment is, you know, to me, seems like, you know, a small amount of money for a large project ultimately, if we were to bring that road up to our current city standards, full-depth pavement, things like that.
So we have three agreements? Is that what we're saying?
Three that we know of.
Okay.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Let's go back here. The Tall Oak and Elizabeth, we plowed now?
Tall Oaks, Tall Oaks, we do not. And Elizabeth Park, we do the main drags. Traditionally, Elizabeth Drive going all the way through, and then we have helped out this year with some of the larger courts, Raleigh, Essex.
So, may I do a follow-up? My question on this one is, I don't see that, maybe I'm missing it here, I don't see the agreement that was signed or -- the reason why I'm bringing this up is, I mean, I just can't believe on snow removal, there's the agreement that they could tell us that we are kind of, I mean, we're taking over a street. I mean, according to this, we want, we own this, take it over now and now, or we want to get it back to them, but I don't understand why we didn't plow it. I mean, just because they said they didn't want to plow with our trucks? I mean, we have smaller trucks. I just don't understand this.
Mr. Kramer?
I have the original agreement in front of me, and as I read it, it basically refers to the maintenance and repair. Traditionally, as our city attorney in the past has reviewed Elizabeth Park with me as well, that's traditionally the common language that goes on providing services for maintenance, replacement, repair of streets, roadways, curbs, and apparatuses thereto within the corporate limits. That's traditionally the language that's used. Our attorney in the past has given us the opinion that maintenance refers to snow removal as well.
So we do not, so it does, according to that agreement, we should have been plowing it?
Correct. But, again, as I said before, most of our equipment is not set up to do it in a fashion in which it makes it easy for the contractor doing the driveways for those homeowners' association to easily remove the snow out of the driveway. Traditionally, what they do is they go through, take, pull all the snow out of the driveways, pull them into the center cul-de-sacs, and then pack it in strategic spots around there.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Station Walk is Ward 1, correct?
I thought it was Ward 1.
Yes, it's in Ward 1.
Yes. Alderman Lazar or Alderman Coles, have you talked to any of the residents over there?
Have I talked to any of theirs?
Alderman Coles?
About this concern?
Yes, I got a, I got a, I got an email that he wanted me to talk about it. But I, I've been on the council for 10 years, and on private roads, I was told that we don't do very much maintenance on them, just little patching here and there, and that the private roads are private roads, and the people that are, homeowners' associations are supposed to take care of them. Now, I was told, I'll tell you where it was, at Carrie's Place, to get out of there one Sunday morning, when I was driving slow through, looking at it, because the woman hollered at me, who was the president of a homeowners' association, says, "Get out of here. You ain't got no business in this street." And I says, "I'm a city official." And she says, "I don't care. This is a private road." So if that's the way city officials are going to be treated, I mean, why should we worry about it? I mean, I realize they got troubles. The road's going to be eventually falling apart, and the few homes that are in there are not going to be able to afford to get the street fixed. But I think they should wait a while until the street gets bad enough, and then come in here, and let's talk, and maybe we can split a bill half and half or something like that until, but for $4,000 in 1998, I read the thing, 1998, $4,000 is probably roughly now about maybe $10,000 or $12,000 now. So there's a lot of difference between that. So I would suggest that the homeowners' association go along until the street gets bad enough, and if it needs a little patching, patch it, and come in and talk to us. And that's what I would suggest they do. And so that would be my idea.
And along those lines, if we're going to support or pay for a portion or all of a private road, whether agreement or not, then we got to look at all the private roads and do the same thing across the board, whether it be Homestead, Dominion, Tall Oaks, Elizabeth, it all has to be uniform if we're going to start doing that, whether there's an agreement or not. Alderman Lazara?
Two items. I was there today. I talked to two residents. Neither one of them knew that this was happening.
Well, what happens is the people sell out.
Alderman Coles, one minute.
Okay.
Let me hear. Alderman Lazara?
So with that, the resident, it was during the day, so there really wasn't too many people at home that I can speak to. Again, the two residents that I did speak to didn't know anything about it. And also, the road, to me, didn't look that bad. And a question for John, have we ever resurfaced a private road before in the past?
Resurfaced a private road?
Right. Like this kind of a road?
No.
Okay. And the only really work that we've done on private roads has been patching?
I guess I'm a little unclear. This currently is not a private road. Currently, we have a maintenance agreement with them. So legitimately, if work is to be done or deemed necessary, or the city council adds that this particular road, say, to a street sufficiency survey or a pavement management plan to say, "We're going to do work on this," we would then pay for that.
Okay.
Because we have a maintenance agreement to do that. A private road outside of these agreements, Tall Oaks, Elizabeth Park, Louise Court, for example, private roads, Homestead, Sunset, no, the city would not do that. And if we were using MFT funds for any of our road repairs, which we have done in the past, not recently, we could not by law use any of MFT funds to pay for road resurfacing.
Okay, so Elizabeth Park and Tall Oaks that we have the other agreements with, have we ever resurfaced those roads?
We've done patching last year in Elizabeth Park. I would not consider resurfacing. I would call it a full-depth patch. But, yes, we are putting surface material down.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Coles?
Oh, no, that's all right.
Alderman Sizmarski?
We have any, what are the other contracts with Tall Oaks and what was the other one you just said? I'm sorry.
Elizabeth Park.
Are they the same as this, open-ended?
Basically, they're the same as this. They are open-ended, they leave both parties the right to terminate by resolution, and they have a dollar figure associated to them for the amount. Again, those were, those dollar figures were worked out at the time of the agreement, so they change per each one. Off the top of my head, I thought Elizabeth Park was, I want to say the neighborhood of $15,000, something like that.
Would you say that we've done more than $4,000 worth of work on any of those streets in 23 years?
With, with respect to Louise Court, I really can't go much beyond recent years. Again, $4,000, you know, we probably have not done $4,000 worth of work to Louise Court since 1998, because all we would have done is some minor pothole patching, perhaps some striping adjacent to the stop bar right off of Louise and Division. Outside of that, I don't think it looks like a lot of work's been done. I know we haven't done any work to the concrete curb or ribbon that's out there that was in the parkway, so no, probably not.
Okay, thank you.
Any, anything else? Well, I'll call on you, but then keep it brief, because I think we're going to probably table this. Alderman Roy Wesley?
I, when these townhomes were built, and Elizabeth Park, and what other ones we have an agreement with, that's when these agreements went into effect. I have a problem with taking things away from agreements that we've set up. The residents of Wooddale and these subdivisions paid the same amount of taxes again as anyone else. When you're taking, nothing against staff on this, but when you're taking services away, they drive our streets, they shop in our town, they spend their money in this town, and they're paying the same percentage as anyone else. I have a problem when we're, when we're going to talk about license agreements and termination of these things, and I'm not in favor of it, and I call the question.
Yeah, I'm forgetting what the procedure is for this. So, so the motion?
Call the question means to do a, there has to be a second to call the question, and then a real call to end the vote.
Okay, and then the motion, okay. Okay, I'm not.
I'm making that as a motion, call the question.
Okay, I, I'm not seeing a second. Is there a second? Okay, that fails. Any other? Alderman Roy Wesley?
I'll make the motion to table.
Is there a second?
I do have one more question.
Okay, but, but there is a motion to table.
Oh.
If, if there's not a second, then it would just go away. Is there a second on the table?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Items to be considered, well, actually, I'm going to go back. Is there any question, comment, because I can still entertain it under the, under the topic.
The only question I would have is, this 288 feet of road, what kind of dollars, if we know, what it would take to resurface this?
Mr. Kramer?
That's going to depend on what level you want it resurfaced at. Currently, I don't believe the road, and, again, this is going to take some verification from staff and perhaps some time and money to do that, verify what the base material, how thick the base material is, how thick the surface material is on that surface. And if we were to do work out there, what, would it be brought up to city standards? Would it be at a normal pavement depth that we repair our city streets at? More than likely, this Louise Court was not built to that. It was probably a little on the lighter side, I'll say. Again, I don't know. I'm not speaking with facts. All I'm saying is, it would, it would really depend on what level we would want to repair that to, if it became to that point. My recommendation would be, we maintain it as we do all other city streets. We start with, you know, crack filling, patching, and then as it becomes progressively worse, as you'll see tonight in a portion of the explanation for the street sufficiency study, you know, though, there would be more aggressive maintenance each time. Traditionally, you don't like to get to a point where the street gets completely reconstructed. You like to do resurfacing in projects prior to that to extend that pavement life. Right now, we're nowhere near, as you yourself already said, the pavement's in fairly good shape. So, again, I think it would be more maintenance items for at least the next 15, 20 years before we'd ever get to the point where we're really talking some serious resurfacing dollars, if no maintenance is done between now and then. Thank you.
Items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, amendments to local building code in June. Item B, brick ordinance in June. Item C, City of Wooddale flood plain buyout policy in June. Item D, streetscape sign project in June. And at some point, we will be talking about the Station Walk License Agreement as well at future meetings. Anything else requested to be added? I make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Report and recommendation, Streets Sufficiency Study Survey. Baxman Woodman is here to give us update. Care to introduce your guest, Mr. Kramer?
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. Yes, before you see on the dais, we placed a draft of the Street Sufficiency Survey, and I apologize for you getting it this evening. We were making some tweaks and final changes to it, so we wanted to make sure we got you the most recent information. This evening with me is Lou Hausman with Baxman Woodman and Jason Fleur. I'm going to let them, or actually, I'll probably set up the boards for them here real quick, and I'm going to turn it over to them to intro the survey.
Alderman Roy Wesley? Maybe, Jeff, maybe you could answer this question for me, since you're one sitting there. When, when did the city get this, this report from Baxman Woodman?
In your packet on, that came out on Tuesday, I gave you a draft report of some of the values, which is shown in that spreadsheet. I gave you some corresponding maps that are very similar to the ones that are up there. And then, most recently, you have the finalized draft that was placed on your dais today that kind of ties it together with the report.
The question was, when did Baxman Woodman give us to the City of Wooddale?
This draft that you have on your dais, I got yesterday, and the report that you have in your hand finalized to me end of last week.
asking for us a recommendation on this for approval, correct?
Correct.
Do anyone think that from Tuesday to Thursday, to look at this information and this packet that you have here that you just got tonight, to make a recommendation for, to go to the CIP, is a fair, fair judgment to make for millions of dollars of streets?
In the current capital year CIP program, most of the streets identified have not changed. We have made some minor tweaks based on the analytical data that we asked them to look at. So in large part and parcel, the program, the process, has not changed. Again, the data that we were working off of was from a 2008 study. That was relatively old. Again, we wanted to evaluate the streets, and I wanted to make sure that the items that were included in this year's CIP, which were included in the first year's CIP, were accurate and were a true representation of a worst-first approach to the street replacements. So unfortunately, the study got, got started. We pushed them along to get that done. You have the most up-to-date information to make a decision. If you would like, we could wait on this report. Unfortunately, that would push us further back in this construction season and possibly not get all of these, the resurfacing done for 2012, which may mean we would not have a 2012 resurfacing program.
I just have a problem with this report, because when this last, not this council, but council before this, I personally asked for Baxman Woodman for a phone call and input on, and get a report on this personally from my ward. That phone call never came. Now I get a report for this.
Keep, keep in mind, the, the road projects that we fund is on CIP for this year, okay? And I understand that.
It doesn't matter. Baxman Woodman was told from, when I was on the council, with the last council that was up here, I said I wanted to be an input on this, on streets in my ward, and wanted to know actually how it is. Now we have this report, and we, we're going to make a recommendation. I'm going to abstain. I think this is last-minute stuff, and I'm blaming Baxman Woodman because I didn't get what I asked for. If they don't want to listen to the, if they don't want to listen to the aldermen up here, that's fine. want to listen to the, if they don't want to listen to the alman up here, that's fine.
Keep in mind, it's the full council. It's not one-on-one with alman.
I understand that, but Baxter and Woodman said that they didn't have a problem with it.
But.
If they don't want to make phone calls, then fine. I'll, I'll go through the city manager and bother him with all the phone calls.
But, like I said, I want the presentation, so.
Alman Wesley, I don't recall that request, and it should have come through my office if it did, or the city engineer's office. I don't recall either one of those happening, so that's my fault.
Well, then, then I will make all my recommendations to you for Baxter and Woodman, and when it's not carried out, then we'll go that.
Okay.
Mayor? I remember when you made that request, and Al said, "No problem." Okay.
Bottom line.
Look, let's get this, Al, go ahead. I mean, I'd like to get this presentation going here.
Okay, yes, that comment was, and Alderman Wesley is correct. However, at this point, this is the draft report, and the intention was, is that this would be the springboard of, you know, you know, sharing this report to everybody all at the same time. You know, my understanding at this point is that this is, again, the draft report. What we're looking for tonight is, is approval to get going on the next year's program before that window of opportunity closes. And, you know, yes, we would like the, the full report approved ultimately, but the, the key is, is that we're sharing this report. We're sharing the information with everybody at the same time, and those conversations are going to be subsequently coming out.
Again, let's get done with this presentation. And Al, again, if you made a promise to alman, please call him back. I mean, if that was a statement made, then it needs to happen. All right?
I, I understand, and I apologize for the confusion, but again, the, you know, the issue right now is, we're trying to get everything up to the board as quickly as possible, yet this is not, we're, I, my understanding is, is that we want to get the outline ready for some discussions here. Yes, we would like to move this forward as a final, but we're, you know, this is an opportunity for everybody to talk about it, and I will talk to you.
Okay, let's, let's get on with the presentation, and we could address this down the line. Mr. Woods?
John, passing or not passing this tonight, does that, is that in any way going to hinder the road work that we're doing for 2011?
Mr. Kramer?
We did change, change the CIP a little bit in relationship to the streets on the resurfacing program. If we were to go back to the original list that was approved and passed in the budget and in the CIP, I think we would be replacing streets or resurfacing streets that are in better condition than the ones we're recommending now. So, if we could at least get some consensus on the 2011, 2012 streets, this year's streets, we could tweak the outlying years at any point after that. We're looking to mainly get consensus on this, so we can move on a design and a letting contract to move forward for this year.
Mr. Woods?
Would there be any monetary change, increase in, in the CIP dollar value?
Significant increase.
Mr. Kramer?
No, we really tried to use the dollar figures that were allotted for this year in our scope of looking at the streets for this year. We're really trying not to go beyond that million-one figure.
Okay.
I'm going to hand it over to Jason now, if I could.
Fine. Jason, take us through the project.
Thanks for having us come in tonight. As John said, I'm Jason Fleur. I'm the project manager on the street sufficiency study. Lou Hausman is here. Lou's the head of our transportation department. Currently, Baxter and Woodman has approximately 30 street sufficiency studies that are out there being used by other municipalities, so we do have some experience with these studies and helping communities such as yours get through those and find the most effective way of using your money. I'm going to go through four different points. I'll pause through a couple of those, give you guys an opportunity to ask any questions, and then we'll move on from there. First, I want to talk about the need for the study. It's asset management. The city has 47 miles of streets, and so, in order to avoid future costly rehabilitation, it's important to effectively manage those streets, to evaluate, to assess the costs and the conditions of all those streets, to find the best use of the city's money towards those streets. Also, the report provides another layer of GIS information. This can be added into the GIS system. You'll be able to click on a street, see what the pavement condition index is, what the estimated construction cost is. Also, we're able to coordinate the roadway improvements with the water main study that's currently going on, so we can coordinate, make sure that the improvements make sense, and the roadway improvements are not occurring, and then water main following behind. So, as John said, it, it's important for us to get, if we could, some concurrence on the FY12 program so that we can move forward with the construction project this year, but there is an opportunity to, to tweak the outlying years. So, as for the study itself, what we, we used Micropave or software, which is software developed by the Army Corps of Engineers. It is sold through American Public Works Association or APWA. So, it's a very reputable program and a, and a reputable way of putting together a street sufficiency study. It's the same way that a lot of other communities do, do so. So, what we did is, we, we started by driving all of the streets. We got out, and we took a look at a random representative sample of each street segment.